Call to be in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body, city of Seward, divided by the Nebraska means act and conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska means act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Please, please enter shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record and our next moment remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves to ready to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Back here. Camper.
Here.
Calderman.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Henrich.
Present.
First item this evening is the draft minutes of February fourth, twenty twenty.
Who can prove?
Do the motion, the second is in for discussion. Same number, address to your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Henrich, present.
Next we have items of the consent agenda are one through five. Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, is any discussion? Same number, address to your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Henrich, present.
Before we start the public hearings, Becky Baker, our library director, brought us Candy, so she will be moved up of the agenda, so Becky, welcome.
Thank you. Some of you may know I've been doing these annual reports for over thirty years and it's hard to be creative, so what I've shared are a couple pages of pictures of some of the highlights from the last fiscal year and a couple of pages of statistics that would require the state statute to share with you annually. So, we are moving into a phase similar to, I think, what a lot of bricks and mortar retail stores are facing when we need to give the people who visit us more of an experience than just, here's a book, get out of here kind of thing. And so, we're focusing a lot on event kind of things that draw people into the library, so. Different mindset and even old libraries can learn new things. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There were a kick down a sign that says, here's your book, get out of here.
We are getting a new digital sign and so.
Yes.
And we're gonna have some fun things on that.
Very excited. Any questions for Becky?
I'll just note my thanks to Becky, the library board and all the staff and volunteers that we have at the library. It's a great group to work with. They author or offer a plethora of activities, programming, along with our collection of materials. Wonderful meeting spaces that we utilize on behalf of City Hall in both our own work and then also in our economic development work. It's a great place to, to show off and we try to do that as much as possible. So, thank you Becky to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to accept Becky's report?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
Do you have a motion in a second, is any discussion? Same number, address to your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, present.
Thank you Becky. Will be turned into public hearings, the first public hearing, seven P M. Updates to the city of Seward's community development block grant C D G economic development plan. Trey Erdmer. Did I get that close? Good night.
My name's Trey Erdmer with Southeast Nebraska Development District. I work with the economic development reuse committee on basically, the reasons why the plan should be updated, the old plan was from two thousand and five. And those funds are very restrictive in what they can be used for, so having a plan is very restrictive on top of the restrictions that the federal government puts on there, just kind of didn't allow the funds to be used very easily. I think that's represented by the very few projects that have been funded over the last twenty years, I don't even know how many it's been, probably less than five. So, I work with Greg and as well as the rest of the committee on just the updates and a lot of the recommendations in that plan were from other communities that have had, are based on their plan in the past, so. It's been approved. I guess the updates in the plan that proposed have already been approved by D E D., so it just made sense to follow something similar.
It does make a lot of sense, I know in the last ten years since I'm the mayor, we really haven't utilized it because I know at one point the state was really concerned about how the funds could be used. I think it was a federal audit perhaps on the program and so everyone got real skittish about using these funds because they were, they didn't want to inadvertently be in violation of those federal. So, to have this as being possibility again definitely is a good thing, so. Any, it is a public hearing, so I'm gonna, do any questions first for him, otherwise we'll open up to public comment. So, we'll open up the public comment, do you from the public wish to comment on item one, one, one A? Seeing no one, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, I don't want A to be counted, have any other questions or comments, or would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash seven, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So, second.
Do you have a motion in a second, address to your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Henrich, present.
Alright, item number two, under public hearing, use of seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents of community development block grant economic development program income reuse loan fund. Funding for financing under the approved economic development plan for the city of Seward, Nebraska for use of program income of a prior community development block grant for economic development. Trey, don't go too far, you got a couple more things you gotta do here.
Yes, I won't explain a lot of the project, just because I know that business owners are here, so let them do that.
Okay.
Essentially, we received an application for seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. I'll just go through the requirements, so the requirements of this program is that you must create one job for every thirty-five thousand dollars you receive. So, with the seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents asked, they'd be required to create point four nine or essentially half of a position, full-time position. The funds will be used for the purchase of equipment, which includes water heater and then some updates to their H V A C system. And I'll let them explain more.
Sure, and it's also a public hearing, so as part of the public comment portion of public hearing, if the applicant would like to come up first, and then if anyone else would like to speak on this item, you're sure welcome to. You're welcome, go ahead. Welcome.
Thanks. So, you just want us to explain it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your name and your address first, please.
Chelsea Cosmicke, Conor Cafe on the Square, one oh one South Six. Lacy Cook.
Okay, home address? Yeah, you're.
For me, it works.
Ten sixty-seven, it's your drive.
Um, so basically what we're looking to do is our H V A C system is extremely out of date. Um, it can't keep up with operations, therefore we're putting in funds, um, at least once a year, if not more, to just keep fixing it enough to get by. Um, this has been a problem for, as long as we can remember, we've been there for over ten years, working on and off, and it's been an issue since, and so we're looking to fund the replacement of two out of the three units, so we don't have to continually invest.
Great, any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Oh, did you have a question? I'm sorry, one second, Ellen?
Is this going to create new jobs?
Yes, well, um, well, we will be creating new jobs, yeah. We have, um, in our plan to add more people to our staff to help. Yeah.
Is that directly related to H V A C system?
No.
Not.
It doesn't have.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, this is a public comment for the, the public hearing on item two, uh, two A. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, you're welcome to come forward, yeah?
I'll just answer, address that question.
Sure.
So, if there's like a manufacturing company and they buy a piece of equipment, I guess they could create a hundred jobs, only two of them could use that piece of equipment, so I mean, it doesn't have to be directly related to the ask. So, if they're asking for H V A C, I mean, obviously an H V A C system isn't going to create a job for that business. That makes sense.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, then I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, item two, um, two A. Again, this is a resolution approving the use of community development block grant C D G program income funds in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, thirty-eight cents from the economic development loan fund under the approved economic development plan for the Cosmicke Cook Associates LLC B A, um, doing business as Cafe on the Square project. Any questions or comments from the council, Greg?
I'll just add some clarification, because again, this is the first time we're doling out some of this money out of this fund in nearly ten years. Um, and with the planned amendment you just approved, this is an allowable function under that. Uh, it was, this specific project was approved unanimously by the C D G reuse loan committee that oversees those dollars and makes a recommendation to you with two council members that serve on that committee, uh, that sat on that and listened in on it, and so, um, the funds currently, we have no outstanding loans to any other projects. And so, the funds, other than the interest they're gaining in the, in the bank, there is no more to be received or taken out. Included in your packet, I think, with the agenda item that noted, uh, the planned amendment was a letter from, uh, I think it was Steve Charleston, is that correct, Trey? Basically saying if you guys don't start using up these dollars within the year, that the state will finally request that they be returned, and then also denoted, um, and we'll get into this, I think, believe in the fourth agenda item. How they want to see those dollars returned, and if they're returned at kind of stagnant amount on a repayment schedule, that those dollars will be requested to be returned too. So, so we'll handle that, the fourth item, but ultimately, I want to give you kind of the lay of the land of what's been going on in regards to these C D G funds. We have no outstanding projects, these dollars have been sitting dormant for a number of years, and the state is requesting that we either return them to the state or start using them within qualifying projects, so.
So, these funds are a loan, not a grant, right?
They can be, under the plan you adopted, they can be in any, very similar to what we have in our freedoms with L B eight forty. They used to be far more restricted on the old plan, I think that's one of the reasons why they were not requested for the last ten years. Your current plan now gives you guys the latitude to really define those terms. Um, those recommendations were made by the committee, I think this actual applicant had to go back, redefine the terms and come back to the C D G application committee and then it was approved unanimously. Um, this one is a forgivable loan for a half portion of it, uh, and then the other half is repaid over five years, similar to what we do with L B eight forty. If they make their five-year payments on time, you forget the other half and it is complete. Uh, we'll talk about what happens to the program income that comes back in when we hit agenda number four, so we have a plan for what will happen to the repayments as they come through.
Any other questions on two, number two A? Again, we are just, as a city, we're fairly limited on what programs we can offer for economic development, we have fifth with L B eight forty and we have the C D G fund, and so, and really had have been utilizing it as was mentioned before, so. This just gives us another tool to support local businesses and, and, you know, as long as it fits the criteria, at the end of the day, I think what's important is that we are helping businesses grow, expand, or start, and especially in the downtown where you have hundred-year-old buildings, it can get a little expensive to maintain those and, and keep them current and, and modern, so. So, with that, any other questions or comments on, yes, Ellen?
I support this, don't get me wrong, it's just, I just, I'm having a little trouble wrapping my head around the fact that any company, any business in Seward who needs new H V A C or needs new whatever fixture can come and, and ask for money out of this program without really being tied to a job.
They have to create the equalized jobs as Trey explained. Unfortunately, with the small amount of their ask, they don't have to create a lot, but they'll have to prove over a two-year period that they created and offered, um, a half a job because it's, it's based on a thirty-five thousand dollar ask for one F T E forty-hour employee. And so, they'll have to prove and provide documentation to Trey throughout the two-year process that they did create that job. Uh, also, the jobs that they're looking for under the C D G program are jobs that are offered and available to low and moderate income employees versus we made a professional position for a new engineer or attorney, and obviously that's not most likely going to be available to low and moderate income people, and so that meets the federal criteria for the C D G related project. They'll be held to that standard over the two-year period to create that job and maintain it, uh, for the equalized period. Correct, Trey?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on item two or two A, otherwise would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash eight, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So, move.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, address to your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Henrich, present.
Item number three, this is also a public hearing, use of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of community development block grant economic development program income reuse loan fund funding for financing under the approved economic development plan for the city of Seward, Nebraska for use of program income of a prior community development block grant for economic development. Trey?
Okay, so we received a application for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which is basically the remainder of the funds available, um, from Bottle Rocket, and these funds we use for initial expansion startup costs to purchase inventory, um, utilities, labels, packaging, kegs, bottles, hoses, and then a bunch of various equipment. With a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar ask, they'll be required to create three point six three jobs or essentially three and three-quarter full-time positions. And then, like I said, it will, it will take up the remainder of those funds, this was you asked when unanimously voted on by the reuse committee, and I'll let, um, Gerald explain. Unless you have any questions for.
Any questions for Trey? If not, we'll open up the public comment portion of item three and three A, would you want to come forward and state your name and address?
I got you planned this, right?
I was gonna say, I don't know if I've ever seen.
Uh, Jason Berry, three oh one Lindo.
Gerald Humm, twelve ten Eastern, right?
Ryan Cook, three oh two East Roberts.
And what we're gonna be doing with this money is, uh, we are finally at the point of expanding, uh, we're taking a building, we're, uh, we're going from a finished product each batch of sixty-two gallons up to nine hundred and thirty gallons per batch. Uh, we plan to distribute across the state, um, and beyond hopefully. Uh, each package, uh, I've showed some of you, um, uh, the new labels and packaging will all have advertising promotion and tourism for Seward, Nebraska. Our goal is not only to, um, uh, create good, good beer to, to send out to, uh, the communities, but to also help promote and make Seward proud of what we're doing. And so, that is not only our business practices, but, uh, with the labels and the beer that we produce and send out that represent Seward.
Great, any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else? Then I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing, thank you, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to add, thank you for everybody that worked on this, I think it's a very good project and we appreciate all the input that you've had, Greg and Craig and Jonathan, so I just want to say thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Do you have some more?
I can, I can, take it when you want me to.
Go ahead, take it.
Um, the only guy will note on this one is, this one is a direct loan, so the entire, uh, program income is for a loan, uh, I believe the terms are given.
Seven.
Seven year?
Seven, zero percent.
Yep. Um, and then, what will happen to the program income will be the very next agenda item, we'll talk about all that. Uh, but that were the terms that was agreed upon and recommended by the C D G reuse loan committee, uh, on this item as part of the ask. And so, we can fill in any other specific details if you want.
I did, I did close the public comment portion of the public hearing on three A, just reminder, this is a resolution approving the use of community development block grant C D G program income funds for in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars from the economic development loan fund under the approved economic development plan for the Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC, doing business as Bottle Rocket Brewing Company project. Any other questions or comments from the council, or would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay, a resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash nine, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So, move.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, please address your votes, please play the votes.
Running in favor, walking back, Capick, Calderman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Henrich, present.
Next we have item four, this is enter into a memorandum of understanding, M O U., between the nonprofit development organization N D O., Southeast Nebraska Development Incorporated, N D O., uh, and the city of Seward, and Trey, did you want to take this?
Great, so the Southeast Nebraska Development Inc., which is a subsidiary of SEND, is a nonprofit development organization, um, that was, I guess it's recognized by the Department of Economic Development. And the reason for this is for any projects, so any new grants the city would receive for economic development purposes, purposes, would get repaid to this N D O. Um, and this essentially de-federalizes the fund, so any of the job requirements or any of the requirements that, um, the C D G program has as far as like environmental reviews, tracking jobs for two years, any of that is gone once these funds are in the N D O. Um, so this applies to new grants and also, um, new projects that the city approves locally. You can use the process of essentially, you grant the funds to the N D O., the funds get paid back, or the N D O. will loan them on the city's behalf to the business, and then the business pays it back to the N D O. to be reused in a regional pool. Um, and the reason for this, as Greg mentioned, um, if the funds are not used by June thirtieth, but since you allocated these projects, they will be, but, um, the funds are gonna get repaid back so slow, you're likely not gonna be able to recapture enough funds to do another project within twelve months, and if you don't do a project within twelve months, the fund becomes idle and the state requires them to be paid back again to the state. Um, so you, so you got rid of the problem of my using them before June thirtieth, but now the problem is you're not gonna be able to use them again before June twenty twenty-one because you're not gonna have enough funds available. Um, so what essentially what would happen, if you don't use the N D O. process, you'll get these loan payments back, and then when you do your program income report semi-annually, if, if you show that you haven't done a project, you'll essentially get the loan payments back from the businesses and then you'll cut a check for whatever that amount is to the state every year, just paying the funds back that way. So, the N D O. process is a workaround, it allows the city to at least keep the funds regionally, um, so local businesses can apply to the N D O. Um, and what, so I oversee the board or help do the administration on that, um, what they typically do is have a representative from the city that helps, um, populate that fund with their local reuse fund, they typically have a member of that community sit on that board, just so you do have some local control, um, of that fund.
So, basically this is the next best thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
And we had a long conversation on this at the reuse meeting, I think, for like an hour, so.
But, I mean.
So, I don't know.
And this was their recommendation?
Yes, so initially, just because we hadn't met in ten years, we had to brief all the committee members to get them up to speed on it. Then we gave them the proposals, the new draft agreements, then we met back with them again and walked them very specifically slowly through the N D O. process and made sure that they were comfortable with it, because again, we just don't believe that the program income with these two projects you now approved, the way that those funds will roll back in will be so slow over that period of time, you won't have sufficient enough program income to get it back out fast enough for somebody to make it continue to work. And then we also have administration and all the other time that's on top of it.
Can you refresh, um, my memory at least, of who are the other partners in the region?
As far as who's contributing money, um, York, Fall City, um, there's an old plasma project out there, I think there's around four hundred thousand in that regional pool.
So, it's the whole southeast corner of Nebraska, if I recall, is that correct? Okay, and, and, in the organization?
Is it essentially southeast Nebraska minus Lancaster?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, minus Lancaster and Butler, for some reason it's not.
Yeah, they've, they've never really.
Any questions for Trey?
So, I just need to explain in English exactly what, I mean, you guys talked about it for over an hour at your meeting, give us in plain English exactly what this memorandum is doing.
So, as, when the two loans you just approved go out, as they make their repayments, those repayments will actually go directly to SEND Inc.
Okay.
They will put in their, what is now a four hundred thousand dollar pool of loan funds available to anybody in the region that's a member of SEND to apply for, including the city of Seward, I believe Seward County, just in general, anyone in Seward County. Will also have a seat at the table because we're a contributing member now to that fund, so we will have somebody, maybe a representative from our reuse loan committee, probably never meet again because we won't have any more applications, but if we, we did future applications or new projects, they make it together. But we'll designate somebody to sit on that board and then we'll have a say, uh, in the projects as well that come through, and it'll be a tool for Jonathan to direct businesses, large and small, to go look at, uh, as a low-interest financing mechanism available to us. Versus that money just going back to the state and it's gone and we have no access to it again.
So, the, the state's not gonna, we, we don't have another project within twelve months, the state isn't gonna come to the city looking for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Nope. This is their preference, this is also their preference, so if we apply for a new C D G grant that has program income where it would basically, we would make new loans and then receive those loans, they would require us, correct, Trey? To do this mechanism?
They require the funds to go to the N D O., the reason they don't want these funds out there because there's, there's like eight million dollars across the state, and when HUD, the federal agency, looks at these accounts, they look at it as an account receivable, so they think, oh, you guys don't need additional um, grant money allocated to your state because you have all this money sitting out there, so this is an easy way to get it off of them.
And also, there's a lot of extra layers if it's C D G, that tie the hands of a lot of people who want to utilize it, that aren't in that fund.
So, would projects come to the city or just bypass the city and go directly to this?
Directly to them.
So, we're just out of the loop, other than our representation?
Yes.
Other than, okay.
But now there's four hundred thousand available versus what we had, basically, right?
Which would be the program income minus the half, so you're probably looking at a hundred and ten thousand, but it won't, it just won't come back in fast enough for, ever to recoup it all and get it back in there and get it back out the door every single year over the next seven plus years.
So, we're not going to apply for a new round of funding to this program, we're just gonna let it run out?
We could, but if we apply for a new round of funding, we have to give it to them.
So, what's the problem?
What?
Well, then, then there's no problem.
No, well.
What do you mean?
The problem is whether you want to give this money back to the state or give it to.
No, I, I mean, are you planning on applying for a new round?
Currently, no.
So, there's not a round of this funding, so this, there was a business who created, you know, twenty or thirty jobs probably, and I don't know when that first grant was awarded, but essentially that business got awarded a grant, or the city got awarded a grant to loan the money to the business, and the business paid it back to the city.
And that's how we got the money?
And that's how you got it.
Okay.
The, the state doesn't want that to happen anymore, just because it's been mismanaged across the state and it's just sitting idle a lot of the time.
If we were to leverage C D G dollars in a loan that went out in the same way it did however many years ago to somebody, generate thirty jobs, if we did that again and it got paid back to us, we'd have to send it to them, they would require us to, whether we do this tonight or not, any new money coming in.
The program as we've known it is over. The question is, what's the best alternative? Any other questions, um, or comments on item number four? Seeing none, I believe you just need a simple motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, is any further discussion? Same number, address to your votes, please play the votes. Thank you, Trey, for all that you've done. Uh, next item we have is item number two under administrative items, this is a resolution awarding bid for Carol K. Boulevard, Bader Hillcrest Federal Aid City Project, U R B six seven six three one to Emmy Collins Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of four hundred four thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and approving plans and specifications used in the Nebraska Department of Transportation bidding process. Um, before I go to Greg, and just so you know, we did have a request from Mr. Nottingham, right here, okay, and so he asked to be able to speak on this, and so we were gonna do it the last meeting, but because it was tabled, we'll. Right here, okay, and so he asked to be able to speak on this, and so we were gonna do it the last meeting, but because it was tabled, we'll incorporate that. So even though it doesn't have a public, um, comment portion, like you would have at a public hearing, um, once the council had a chance to talk, then we'll let the public also speak on this, and you can go first, since it was your request. So, unless you don't, unless you want, unless you want to go last, I guess it's your preference, so, um, Greg, did you wanna start?
I'll start us off, I'll give you the kind of the lay of the land, and then what happened since our last meeting. And so as you are well aware, we tabled this item again at the last meeting, uh, to continue, we had no distinctive updates for you on the audit that was filed, uh, by the attorney for the East Ridge Homeowners Association. And so we said that pursuant to the current bid, it was supposed to expire approximately last week, and so we notified you that we may call a special session, uh, to gather the council if we had new information to provide you. Um, the only information definitively that was provided that week was that Emmy Collins, the bidder, was willing to extend the bid to give the city more time to round up information and hear it at a regular meeting, which is not an unusual process. It's asked for and requested regularly, uh, in, in regards to my conversations with NDOT, and so they did expend that, extend that bid for an additional week, it would take us to this Friday. Um, and so with that, it was the mayor's decision not to call a special session to continue to see if we can provide you more information as you requested. Uh, so that was extended out, uh, we worked on that directly through NDOT, so we have representatives from the, NDOT here tonight that will kind of fill you guys in on some other information as well. Um, that was the first thing that happened. In the meantime, uh, city attorney Hofschneider and myself continued to work with, uh, Mr. Damon, with the homeowners association to, uh, get information if they received anything from the OIG, and then we also tried to contact the OIG's office directly. Um, ultimately, on the city's behalf, we were directed to, uh, the Office of Governmental Affairs with the Department of Transportation, and so the OIG, uh, said all other future requests from the city of Seward in regards to this item need to go in that direction. So we were sent off in that way, and as you remember, we have last discussed, we filed a FOIA and all this other information, and unfortunately, the FOIA essentially acted like nothing existed, and so we're kind of frustrated by that process, and then being directed to the, um, Office of Governmental Affairs, a whole different sector and office in, in DOT at the federal level. In the meantime, um, continued to gather information, work with NDOT to kind of follow up and see what guidance they could provide us on the audit, uh, and what we may be looking for, timelines and things like that. And so, one of the things that first kicked in in that timeline, and, uh, city attorney Hofschneider could help me, but was the, what's known as return of appraisers, there was an action in regards to the condemnation that was decided. Uh, there was a given appeal period that happened to fall over this last timeline that we've talked to you about. And so the return of appraisers was returned, it gave a definitive valuation to the property that was condemned. That was filed with the courts, that item then was paid for by the state of Nebraska as part of their procedure, and put that on file with the court, and then the court has filed, uh, with the registered deeds office, what's known as a return of appraisers. Uh, and I provided that to the council earlier today. Uh, the appeal period for that has been completed, we have not received an appeal, so that transaction is complete. And that takes care of, uh, the acquisition of the right of way, and so that action is done. So that was the first, and we just gave it a few extra days to confirm that, that no action had been filed with the court, so that is done. Uh, the next action that took place was a request by the administration, uh, at the bequest of the mayor through Mr. Hofschneider, uh, to Mr. Damon, the attorney for the homeowners association, for additional information that was noted in the audit request. Uh, the audit request, if you remember reviewing it, said that if, if there's more information that the, the OIG office would need, please contact us, we'll provide that. And so, uh, Kelly did, um, send a request over to Mr. Damon to request that information. We actually did receive, I believe, that information today, and that was also forwarded on to the council, and so that information was provided earlier this afternoon, which is also the date we received it, was earlier this morning. Uh, another additional item, trying to lay out the land of everything that kind of came in over the last few days, was we received a letter from Concordia University interim president, uh, Russell Summerfeld, and it was directly in relation to one of these specific items that was identified in the audit request by the homeowners association. Um, it noted an item, and, and we can pull the audit request if we want, but it essentially said that, um, Concordia was in opposition to the project, and that was the statement made in one of the items listed that was provided. Um, Concordia University, uh, felt the need to correct the record, and so a letter was sent to Mr. Damon. Uh, it just noted, on behalf of the university, I'm trying to correct this reference, which is an error in the record. Concordia University, Nebraska does not have any position on the Carol K. Boulevard Street project, stated or otherwise. Accordingly, the university requests that the association correct its erroneous representation to United States Department of Transportation and any other entity to which same has been asserted. And so that letter was provided to the council as well today, we received that late yesterday, and so, um, that was noted in the materials that were provided to the, the auditor, uh, at the federal level today, and also, um, passed on to us. And so it's listed in the number of items that, uh, that was a misstatement, uh, in the audit request, and so, uh, that was clarified. Uh, the last thing that we received today that was provided to the city council, uh, was a communication from, again, attorney Damon, um, forwarded on to, uh, city attorney Hofschneider, and I'll just, just for the record, for those that are in attendance may not have seen this, the council or the mayor have seen this today. Uh, it says, uh, this is a follow-up correspondence, this is from Scott Harding, who we've been in contact with at the OIG office, he's the chief complaint center operator. Uh, in regards your follow-up correspondence regarding your concerns, the OIG exercises independent judgment in determining the best use of available resources to meet our responsibilities under the Inspector General Act. We have reviewed the material you provided, determined that your concerns do not warrant a formal OIG investigation, inquiry, and the appropriate venue may lie with the Federal Highway Administration and the state of Nebraska DOT. And then it gives a link, um, that they can contact the local federal highway division, and then it notes our files now closed, and we are unable to reply to further communications regarding this matter. And so, uh, Mr. Damon then forwarded on to, uh, Joseph Werning, the local division administrator at, uh, Nebraska Federal Highway, uh, just forwarding information in regards to their request to the OIG. And so, it's essentially, as the question was asked, the au, request of the audit has been denied, for simple terms. At this point, I don't know, we need to go through all the steps of discussing what was in the audit, I can answer questions, and then I doubt that we have, um, Jody and Brendan from DOT here to speak directly to some of the things in regards to their processes, what goes on, and how they, uh, take a look at these projects to ensure that, that they're trying to do everything by the book. They may also speak to some specifics about federal highway, uh, and their interaction with this project. Their interaction is probably more in-depth at the federal highway level, because of the age of the project and how they proceeded on it back then, versus how they work through federal projects now. So, I can answer any questions about anything we've received, uh, questions about the audit, what's going on, and then, uh, we can have NDOT come up and kind of fill you guys in too.
So yeah, so first, if the council has any questions or comments at this point, and then we'll open up at the public comment portion, and then after that's, um, completed, then we can go to the NDOT and, and follow up with that. So, I wanna give the council an opportunity first, do you have any questions or comments on what was sent to you today, or on this item in general? If not, okay, Mr. Nottingham, did you wanna?
Actually, do you want to, someone else would like to go first?
Oh, okay. Is the public, what's that? I'll put this, just real quick. Um, no, not at this point. Please say your name and your address.
The Gearkey one one two seven. And since I've done this before, this time I wrote it out, and stay on topic. Um, I'm here today to voice my opposition to accept a bid for Carol K. I oppose the resolution for many reasons, but I understand I can only speak to the bid. The bid being presented for eight hundred four thousand dollars is a low bid, but it allows for three change orders. What is that? Well, that according to my friends in construction, is how a low bidder makes his money. A change order is when they encounter a problem in construction phase that maybe they didn't anticipate before. Say they go out there and they start moving some stuff in the bulldozer, it's like, oh gee, this floodplain is really wet, and so let's get some more dirt, let's get some more gravel, three thousand, forty thousand, whatever, and so that can go on three times. Um, I don't know, and I haven't been able to find out, but is there a limit to how much a change order will add to the project? I have not seen any, anything in the bid, I've looked over the bid and everything. So, talking to people in construction, say these costs can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, because you just don't know. It could be zero, but chances are it's gonna be more. So, those things considered, I think we can surmise that the cost at eight hundred four thousand dollars is definitely gonna be higher. Look at the engineering cost, we started with sixty-eight thousand, and we're in the two hundred thousand dollar range. I think the nature of the project and where it is, we can only surmise that we're gonna have a lot more cost. The original cost estimate, like I said, was sixty-eight thousand, two hundred eight is what you've contracted with, with JEO, approximately a hundred and eighty-nine has already incurred. The state has a cap on the project, total cap on the project, and we're already very close to that. So anything over the cap is totally on the city. In view of the facts of limited public support, ongoing expense to maintain a road through a floodplain prone to flooding, I don't think it's really a good choice, the project should be shut down before any more money is spent. The project has many flaws from its inception, and yet it continues to be pushed. Why is an idea proposed ten years ago, ten years ago, still deemed pertinent? The purpose first identified on the grant were flawed, remains flawed. And to clarify some misinformation being circulated, when we purchased the land, it was purchased as farm ground. There was no right-of-way, there was no easement, it was farmland, purchased to provide us homeowners with a country view and land to farm. Also, we in association are not suing the city, we only exercised our right to protect our property from eminent domain. And then we requested an audit, to make sure that the project and taxpayer money was being used appropriately. The city decided to build in the floodplain wetlands, and then reroute, re-engineering, redo's through our private land. But anyway, back to the topic, let's use any projected money elsewhere, the engineering is done, you've paid for it, you took our land. Complete hill crest, bluff road, bridge, and if the development that you say will happen, it starts to happen, then consider Carol K. If, if truly necessary, the project is really out of order. Let's fix our known issues and not spend the taxpayer money on a project at this time has little more to offer than our road to nowhere. A little bit of an update, the information I found when reviewing the documents, my FOIA request in the past, indicated that in two thousand and nine, on the transportation comp plan, I think it's page thirty-three, which is so often mentioned as a reason to build this road, it shows that a right-of-way for Carol K. It listed all the different roads, and then it had the alternate routes, Carol K., Bluff Road, and then this side, it listed how much earthwork would cost, this cost, and this cost. And then plan on the right-of-way acquisition for Carol K., forty-nine thousand dollars. Two thousand and nine, it's important to remember that date, because in two thousand and eleven, when you submitted a funding grant document, you said no right-of-way was needed. You identified it, you put a price tag on it, in two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, you said no right-of-way. There are just some of the inconsistencies that have been presented to the IG, and as Greg just shared, the IG has come back and has directed us to submit our findings, our concerns, our documents to the state, which has been done. I just think some of these issues are gonna be resolved before we subject the taxpayers to maybe a million-dollar exposure. It's been said in this company of you, that the homeowners are causing the city a lot of extra cost. And I really wanna address that, we have not caused you extra cost, we have exerted our right as taxpayers and as citizens to protect our private property through eminent domain, and then requested an audit. And I, I'd like just everybody to put that down, and quit saying, well, the homeowners are costing us money, that's not true. What's costing you money is poor planning, and the refusal, for ten years, ten years, you have refused to address the concerns of constituency, of constituents, every junction. Back in twenty seventeen, the city was aware that the project would require additional right-of-way. I don't know, remember which council member stood next to me when Julie Auden from JEO showed us that plan? And she said, I said to her, I said, well, that looks like it's gonna be on our property. And the person standing next to me said, oh, no, 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 it's all on the city property. And Julie said to me, no, it's on their property. And the person standing next to me said, well, that's not what we've been told. Twenty seventeen, the city was aware that private property was needed for this project. Twenty seventeen, nobody said anything to us, twenty eighteen, no one said anything to us, January of twenty nineteen, two years, we got paperwork from the Department of Transportation talking about acquiring our property. Two years, you knew for two years, and you never made any effort to notify us. They say, come, let's talk, let's see what we can figure out, what can we trade off? What do you need on this project to make this right? Can we trade this, this? Nothing, two years, nothing. What we got was the official notification from the Department of Transportation. And then, not being really aware of how that process was supposed to work, and I admit, they sent documents and such, um, there were a couple phone calls from the Department of Transportation, and my recollection of those phone calls, pardon me, was me and another constituent ranting and reading a little bit about the project. Two phone calls, maybe three, heard nothing, ten-day letter in June, I personally went to the Department of Transportation to Tom, handed a letter to him that said all for the communication would be through our lawyer, because we didn't really know, we were out of our depth. He told me after I kind of reviewed what was going on, said, I'm gonna run this up the flight pole, June. We heard nothing after that, July, August, I think there was one call to our lawyer asking who our tenant farmer was, and then on Labor Day weekend, we saw on the city agenda a resolution for city council to file eminent domain. Now I understand that some say they couldn't talk to us about it, and state and talked to us about it, but really, no one talked to us at all. Two years they're working a solution, and now we're accused of delaying. So who let the project idle for four years? Look at your documents, twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, LPA documents, and even your own ledger, you did nothing. You did nothing, you paid for nothing, the LPA document says nothing. And then all of a sudden, everything starts to happen, so why is it rushing out to make a bid commitment? If the road is such a bargain, a few weeks delay on bidding will not be disastrous, but going forward casts disastrous consequences for the taxpayers you represent. Let me add, just as a side note, I don't know if you are aware, according to the bidding contract, that most of the trees and the shrubs down there are going to be removed. I was just thinking today, doors marked houses that turn over her grave, she'd be out there strapping herself to those trees. That area is a very diverse nature site, and we will be losing that. I guess that's another unintended consequences of putting a road to that area that had been poorly planned from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Seeing no questions, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Welcome, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Dana Nottingham, six nine five, Grand Park Drive. And I need to write my name down here, I'll.
Event, yeah, what, just whatever, yeah.
City Council Mayor, thank you, um, we appreciate as residents the work you do for us on behalf of, grateful that, that you take time out of your own personal lives to, to help do things that we can't do, or don't have time to do, or don't have the money to do, or the ability to do, we appreciate that. As residents, as individuals, as people, we make mistakes, and I think this time you're making a mistake. If you approve the bid for the contract, you're putting a road through land that you really shouldn't be doing. As I look, I don't live over in that area, but I'm a resident, and you are my representative, so that's why I'm here today. And as I, as I drive around the city, as I look at that road, you're trying to alleviate some traffic congestion from East Ridge, I've never seen a lot of congestion there, but it seems to me that if you do that, really what you're doing is creating additional traffic at the corner of Hillcrest and Columbia, which has a university, a church, a school, and a daycare center on that corner. Seems that people that go down the new road won't be turning left to go drive on a dirt road to leave town, they'll turn right and go through town. Creating, I think, more congestion for the residents who live there, more, more, more trouble for those who are around it. That's my objection to the road. Um, I also have an objection to your use of eminent domain for, um, taking, for building this construction, constructing this road, excuse me. I, I object to taking property from individuals, I know it's legal, and I know that we've gone through the process, and I know that court cases have said you can do it, and that's okay. But what I think is that eminent domain should be used solely for emergency purposes. For purposes that are needed for emergency issues or for something that'll affect and, and, uh, help the community as a whole. What you've done is taken property from private landowners, even if it's just a little bit, to build a road that in the eyes of many is unnecessary, um, not an emergency. In fact, um, just yesterday, President Obama, close to the eleven years previous, eleven years ago, on President's Day, he signed a bill, um, approving funding for shovel-ready projects. This project, if it was so shovel-ready, should have been built, that would be required for the funding. Um, to me, it seems that it's not as urgent as it may seem, but I think it's unnecessary. Um, I, I, I urge you to, to oppose the funding for the resolution for the construction of the road project. In addition, um, Linda said, said this as well, but I just wanted to bring this up, I did hear also that there's blame being put on the landowners for three hundred or upwards of three hundred thousand dollars, whatever the cost is, um, for the past few years, um, adding to that cost just by delaying. Really, that cost is on your shoulders, you did it, you've taken the project, the landowners are exercising their rights as landowners, as property owners, as residents. People who spent perhaps their life, all their, all the earnings they could to buy a property, have a home, have a view, have some farmland, and not be encumbered by.